Everybody, thanks for being out today for our county commission meeting. I will stand for prayer. Follow my pledge of worship. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for the opportunity to gather, to consider the business of our county and our citizens. God, we pray that you will help us to keep our citizens first in our minds and our hearts. And Lord, we pray that you continue to keep us safe from the pandemic. And Lord, we ask that you will bless this meeting in Jesus' name. All right, we'll call the meeting in order for agenda business. Do we have anyone for public comment? Sheriff, we got the assignment seat right in front of you.
That's your duty.
Mr. Phil Pudoff. Where you at, Phil?
I thank the commissioners for their time to speak. Free speech is at the top of our bill of rights. And so I do appreciate the time to address you. Another important aspect is, is in freedom is informed consent, which means that we consent to things that are, for instance, invasive into the body, such as vaccines or whatnot. So, you know, that's something that I've spoke to you folks about. You know, the coronavirus, we want the truth. We want to know what's really going on. I've given you a paper where in California, two days ago, they're, they paused giving out shots from the Moderna, one lot of the Moderna vaccine because of a bad, serious, what do they call them? There's serious side effects, severe allergic reactions. And I've given you a disc by Dr. Simone Gold. She was, she's a frontline doctor and there are many doctors, many health professionals that are upset with what is, what is allowed to be said and what isn't. For instance, she lost her job simply just by giving her ideas and what she knows to be true about the coronavirus and the vaccine. And what's really scary about the vaccine itself is not the short-term effects. Those, those can be very bad, very debilitating. But there are people, even in Pfizer, who left the company and said that there was this definite possibility of people becoming sterile from the vaccine, okay? And this mRNA vaccine is, that's being distributed right now, has never been successful, ever, it's never. They've tried making a vaccine. And unfortunately, what can happen is the body ends up attacking itself once you're exposed to some variant of that vaccine in the wild. And we know that, that the coronavirus is, would they say mutating? So what I've given you is, is a DVD that I think is very good at explaining the cautions and the information that people should know. Now, I've given you a number of presentations and nothing has appeared in the Intermountain. And I know you folks believe in free speech and, and an informed public. I noticed your last, you know, you're gonna stream this and that's good. But my question to the Intermountain is, does it bother you that someone comes in, speaks on something? They're not somebody crazy, you know, someone that studied it, someone that's been involved in battles with vaccines and everything. But it's, nothing's ever appeared in the Intermountain, not one word of anything I've presented to you folks. You know, so I just wonder if that's an issue. It is for me, simply because the truth will set you free. Anything less than that could be very deadly. So what I ask you to do is look at this video. And if you'd like me to come back and actually address those topics, which are very important, I would, I would certainly like to do that and would hope that the Intermountain would at least cover those issues, you know? When the mRNA vaccines were tested in animals and this, these haven't been tested. These are, we're, we're in experimental phase. You say, well, they've been, okay, yeah, okay for experiment, okay? And in the past, any animals that were given an mRNA, mRNA vaccine against the coronavirus died in long-term studies. So, you know, people need to be aware, this has not been studied like any other vaccine. And the dangers, the risks are there. And it's long-term dangers that are the most important, I think. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, next. Harvey Taylor.
Thank you guys for letting me speak today. Appreciate everything. The reason I came today, I, I've been trying to get the food back from the food bank that was at the 4H campground. Of course, I understand why the 4H campground didn't want them there because tearing up the fields, it's winter time, you know, no matter. I have talked to Chris, I'll tell you, and they said he's gonna talk to you, Mark. That's why I never called and bothered you, okay? And I've got a lot of people in the public that said they would help. I talked to the new director of FFRN. I think she was gonna talk to you, Mark. I don't know if she did or not. She called me this morning and they had a board meeting last night and they approved to get this in. Now, I know you guys know, I want to use the runway at the airport. I know you gotta go through the FAA and get this approved. But, you know, we need it for about seven hours to feed the people in the county. It's a need in this county. I have been doing this for about a year now. Through our church, we've been handing out like 340 boxes of food and 340 gallons of milk every week till the money ran out through the stimulus that the state, they was in five phases. They went through the fifth phase. We can't, they, they haven't been approved yet. But the stimulus package that passed has, the money is going out. The state of West Virginia has to put this out for bid. So whoever gets this bid, like World Vision hands it out to us, World Vision has to put their name in and see if they will get that part, you know? They don't know, I just, I got my hat on, I'm sorry. Apologize for that. But what I want to do, I know the, the food bank comes in once a month, I think it was, or every five weeks at the 4H. I would like to know if we could use the runway. I can get, the way a couple of us, of us has figured out, we can get around 250 cars on that runway, two rows. We'll have to help and it might go faster. I'm asking you as a taxpayer, on the airport of taxpayers owned, if I could use that. I will give you two weeks notice or probably more. We need to get this on because they got, I think, a billion dollars for food banks in this stimulus package deal that they passed. I'm afraid if we don't get on this, we might lose this. And there's a need in this county. I know for a fact that there is people in this county that needs this food. And when you get it from the food bank, they send a director there. You get their addresses, you're allowed one box per vehicle. And if there's two people there, I think they was allowing them, if you have a different address, allowing you to come back through with a different address. But you had to go all the way back at the end of the line, you know? But you give one box. To me, I was given two boxes because I know the need. There is a need. I gotta go by food bank regulations. I cannot go up there and say, this is what I'm gonna do. It doesn't work like that with them. And that's good, you know? But we need to get this tractor and trailer back in Randolph County. I have thought, if I had it on, if I could get it on a Saturday, I've got all kinds of places. I could go down to Rodney Taylor Way. We could go to Elkins High School. But school's starting back next week. It's gonna go full-time, two days a week, close Wednesday, bam, everybody's gonna go back. Then March the first, it's gonna go back full-blown if nothing happens. And I'm asking you, please, help me make this happen. I need to know ASAP. If not, we're gonna lose this. I'm scared that we will. I'm not saying, I shouldn't say that we was, but I'm scared we are. There is a bad need in Randolph County. I know for a fact. I get too many phone calls, you know? I met Dave Keastly. What he done for me yesterday to start doing his bakery, it's unreal. I mean, it helped Dave. I gave it to him last night. I passed out bread from his bakery. He kept it two days. Little bit helps a lot of people. But this is a big tractor and trailer loop, maybe once every four or five weeks. And I have thought, I've talked to you how many times? I've talked to Dave. And I wish I'd have called you, Mark. I'm sorry, but Dave was talking to you and I know you've got so much on your plate. Every one of you do. But if I don't get to use that, there's not a place in this county that I can. I could on Saturday, but I can't during the week. And it usually comes in, in Randolph County on a Friday. Please try to make this happen if you could. I would appreciate it and I know the people in this county would. It's a need.
You can get up there for their department lot, that road you're in.
That will?
Be long enough?
No, it's not wide enough. And, you know, the last time they helped, handed the food out at 4H, by nine o'clock, they had over 300 vehicles. And that tells you the need. And you know, and it's a good place up there. And they, they'd love for it to be there, but it's so bad now. We went two to three months without that. And I've went three or four weeks without handing it through our church. And there's a Methodist church up Highland Park, it's the same place we do. Then Pastor held Swacker's Church and Milkwick handed it out. But I know the need and I hope that you guys can work with this to make this happen. I mean, I can't, I can't wait two, three, or four weeks. I really, really, I can't, I don't think I can. And we'll use their insurance, I'm sure, you know? It ain't like it's gonna go under euros. I'm sure they had to show their liability insurance to use the 4H, you know? And, but I, I got a network. I would have done it myself if I'd have, but you know, you gotta go through a nonprofit and get everything's taken care of. Can you help me? I know you want that to mean.
We're making a request, Harvey. As you know, you've already mentioned, the FF, the FAA has to approve that.
Right, it's, it's, I know that.
Something to be approved from the county, you know? The county can make the ask, but you know, from my experience, getting something that, that many cars for that long on a runway, it's gonna be, I don't know that the FAA will approve it.
They used to drag strip there.
What's that?
They used to drag strip race there.
Well, and, and they tried to do it again and it was denied.
But isn't this, do you, I know what you're saying and I understand what you're saying. It's out of your hand.
Federal agency.
Right. But what if you mention about the food bank, the need?
Oh, sure, I mean, we, we definitely can make the ask. That's not, but as far as what the FAA will say.
Understand.
I mean, they are very, very stringent on what they allow and not allow, so.
But could you do me?
We'll be glad to get in contact with FAA and see what we can get done. Yeah, we'll, we'll make the ask.
You're in timeout. You won't have to say.
I know. I got promoted.
But if you guys could think or ask, I've been through this county toothpick for tooth. I do not know, know of another place during the week. He's got a big parking lot down there, but it's not big enough to get 400 cars in. And I know he let me use that, that around his building and all, but there's not. I've asked Burns Trucking by Red卡s. They got too much going through during the week there. You know, that's a good place too, right there. You come off, you go make a ride to go to Burns is down in there where Beta Red卡s used to be. They got too many trucks going in and out during the week.
I thought they were skating rink was, I don't know.
I'm gonna check it on my way up.
Yeah, look at the scene.
But I'll be blocking the highway. You know where you turn off there? At the highway to come back out where Dr. Pritz's office used to be? I just blocking the highway, you're gonna get in trouble from this guy.
Phil, she know your place? I know Commissioner Seesman, he's been.
What about the Phil Gainer?
Well, they, they tried that. Like I said, the law came, they was all the way at Wilson Hill. He's up there fighting, bumping cars.
You did, did you like?
They went all the way down to the old Armory Park? Yeah.
Instead of going straight in, did you leave the cars?
I wasn't part of that, but they called me and said it didn't work. It was too much trouble. I mean, there's.
We did a drive-through at Armory for the autumn on the drive-through and we brought people in, but we, we did, we weaved them back and forth.
I understand what you're saying. But see, when we done.
The problem up there is we had about 24 rows of cars wide for as far as you could see long. And I was trying to help organize and we had a couple of good day. We had a bad day up there when there was a lot of congestion and people jumping line and people wanting to fight and all kinds of things. The next time I went up, I kinda got everybody in a line and, and they had help up there and it worked out well. But like now, we can't, we can't do it. You're talking about, when you start trying to park 350 cars or?
At one time.
Yeah, it's a mess. I think the skating rink is not big enough. There's no way, there's nowhere to put them.
Well, we're gonna block the road and they're gonna be down the four, five lanes there.
And you're gonna, you're gonna shut off Mama's, not Mama's Kitchen, but the Boots.
That is Boots.
It's gonna mess up all that too, John.
Could you do a rotation of some sort while I'm there?
You can't, see, I thought I could split it up.
People aren't supposed to come until 10 o'clock and they're there at?
Seven.
Six, six fifty-five was the first car parked in line up there the last time I was there.
But see, I thought we could close the gate till I get the tractor and trailer usually shows up at 10 o'clock. Put it towards the Elkins at the end of the road, ran the runway, right? Then open the gate up, which would help us tremendously once we got the tractor and trailer in while everybody's fixing the boxes. You gotta get addresses for each person. Then we could have two rows. I've got plenty of help. She told me this morning she had 10 to 15 people. Then we could put one person in each row getting addresses. Then when we start at 11, we're ahead of the game. We have really sat down and thought about this. I know the Elkins High School be an awesome place, but when school's going on, you, you can't do this. You can't. Tigers Valley, Rodney Taylor Way, you could get 200 people down that way. But I thought we could get like 150 to a row at the airport. Like I said, I know it's out of your hands. I just want to explain everything. Then, you know, you get 300 cars, you know what I'm talking about? I mean, we're looking at five to 700 cars. I mean, not at once, because people usually come later where they're not congested up. I really, maybe Intermountain put this in there. No, I'm joking, that maybe someone could call and think of something that we're not thinking of. But I went through this county, you know, I can't, I can't think of a place, you know? I really.
Well, we'll keep, we'll keep helping try to find something and, and you know, we'll make the ask of the, of the FAA.
Do you know when you're gonna call? I'm, I'm not being a thing, but I'm trying to get this, because it might take us three weeks to get it in if we get it in our name in there, you know?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make the, the ask immediately.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. I really, really appreciate it.
Harvey, back here.
How many boxes do you usually fix, you know?
I, I know there's a whole tractor-trailer loop. The last time we did it, we had a whole box of oranges that we give each person. They get, I get, I was, I was talking to them, you know? But man, if anyone here thinks of something, please let me know.
I was just thinking if you knew how many boxes you had, you could do it. But like they just show their driver's license. If their name is Arvagaz, they're an A, they come between 10 and 11. Or, you know what I mean, break it up by.
Well, that'd be awesome, but.
It will not work. Because they're gonna come up and have excuses. I gotta go to work, I need it now.
I've been here since six.
And I thought also, guys, I also thought that maybe I could have two U-Hauls and split this up, say at Homestead, one at Norton Far Hall or something, Colton Fire Department or something. You can't do that because that director has to be there with these. But thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
All right, next. Richard DeBis.
Yeah, I think everybody, I mean, I've been here probably four times. So everybody knows what I want to talk about is body cams. I'm, like I said before in the past, I have never had no interaction with state troopers. Elkins Police Department, no interaction I have with Randolph County Sheriff's Department. And so that's who I'm speaking to. That guy, the first thought, that individual talked about your First Amendment right, freedom of speech. He definitely don't know what county he's living in. But eventually he won't even have that. I'm surprised you got it in this county. But I know what I'm talking about cams and I seen they had iPads. They talked about that, they're gonna talk about that today. I just don't understand why we can't get some CARES Act. I mean, Justice got all this CARES Act money. And I see all these other communities using this CARES Act money. Like where I grew up and I keep bringing it up because that's where I know they got cams using the CARE Act money. They, you've got ambulances using the CARE Act money. I don't know how Justice advocates these. Now they're sitting on it. So, but that, I just thought, bring that up. What I really want to talk about is the reason I would like the cam is because of what happened to me. Like I said, I'm not dealing with the charges that were brought on me. I'm dealing the way the officer acted when it came to my house. And I grew up across from a police station, 18 years with my wife until I graduated from high school. And I never seen a guy act like that. I never seen an officer act like that. I never seen an officer talk to another guy's wife like that. He actually told my wife that she ought to just leave. She ought to just go about and live her life. That's what he told me. Pretty much he acted like a thug. That's what he did. He acted like a thug. His name was Brian Talking. I don't even know how an officer got, a guy like that wears a badge. But I guess he hides behind it because he uses it for his own personal agenda. And I just, that's, and then he falsified the report. I ain't talking about the charges. I'm just talking what happened that day. He falsified the report and then put some good charges against me. And then, you know, I wasn't allowed to fight them charges because the prosecuting attorney's office just backed me in a corner because of my care. I mean, there, there's some people in this town who like me, which I really don't care. I ain't here to come here to anybody like me. But it's just the point, the way he acted. He didn't act professionally. The other officer stayed outside. You could tell he had an agenda. That's fine, I got the charges now. But if you had a body cam, you would have had something to go by. But I couldn't even fight the charges. I mean, the way he talked to my wife, the way he acted, I never seen anybody act like that. I mean, he was a sergeant too. I mean, I was in the military, I was MP 95 brother. I never seen people act like that. I mean, he acted like a thug. He come in there, just rude, rude to my wife, rude to my mobile, my kid was there. And you know, I know people go around here in the community acts, they say they care about the kids, take pictures with the kids. Nobody care about nobody's kid. Because nobody cared about my kid, because my kid was 12-year-old when I got hurt. There ain't nobody in this community cared about my kid. So that's all photo ops. That's what they do. They do that for a photo op. But anyways, I just, that's why I come in here. I don't mean to name names, but I ain't talking about, I don't know what the other officers do in that department. But I know the way that guy acted when he came into my house. And now I got some bad charges on me. And the other charges, I'm not dealing with those. I got a bad charge on me that I didn't deserve. I've been married to my wife 30 years. I never laid a hand on my wife. And that, and I got charged with that and now I gotta sit with that. And scared my wife to death. She didn't know what to do. You know, I never had no interaction with cops my whole life. I, I tried to be as professional as I could. I didn't know, my wife didn't know. She talked to the officer. When she talked to him, he did, he, he just twisted it all up. I don't know where he come up with some of this stuff he talked about in that report. I wasn't able to get the evidence for the prosecuting attorney's office. They gave me trouble about that. They just backed me in a corner with my care, wouldn't let me go home. I didn't have no care, so I had to take the charges. I wasn't able to fight him because my wife's my caregiver. And it just seems like sometimes I wonder how some of these people got jobs in this county because of some shit that went on. But that's fine, that ain't, that ain't what I'm here for. But I'm just here to ask about cams. I know there's a lot of needs out there like that guy talked. They have a lot of stuff in the community, but I'm gonna keep coming back. I did the things the right way too. I filled out a report. They have an incident report you fill out with the sheriff's department. I did that. I didn't have, I've waited three months for the sheriff at the time, who was Sheriff Brady, it wasn't Sheriff Elvin. And three months and nothing. And the last meeting I was at, he was here. Said he sent the report home to my house. I thought, okay, well, I didn't, I didn't have it, so I wasn't able to talk to him about it. I got home, he had a three seconds paragraph. That's it. He didn't even call none of the witnesses. Didn't even ask the witnesses, nothing. There was three people there besides me. Didn't ask nobody, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's, it's kinda like a thug culture, it seems like. These cops get away with murder, they got the immunity and they use it. But that's all. I appreciate you guys listening to me.
All right. Anyone else?
No one else.
All right, minutes from the previous meeting.
We're gonna make a motion that we accept the meeting, the minutes from the January 7th meeting of the county commission.
Motion for floors except minutes of the January 7th meeting is presented to a discussion. Harry, none of us favor, say the same eye.
Aye.
Can you close? Motion carries. All right, reports. So let's see. Kirk, you have anything for us?
Commissioner, if we have one ambulance wreck, two weeks ago, we have one truck out of service. One employee's off with illness. All three stations are up and running. We did do our January, January run census and we were down about 1,500 runs since January of last year. That's due to a lot of other facilities not taking on specialty patients at the time. Most facilities being full. But other than that, yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Phil.
My office is working full staff right now. Everybody's well. And we had to be in the office because we did mail out our 10% increase services. We only had about 620 of those. So we felt we needed to be in the office to answer the calls from the taxpayers. All that's going well. We're doing well.
All right, very good. Let's see. Aaron, you wanna go now?
Sure. I've provided you with a report on how currently Community Corrections is doing. We currently have 125 individuals on the program. Since the beginning of the fiscal year, we've had 30 that are full participants. 133 is a condition of bond. 38 that are services. 22 from parole. I've not had any that are just check-ins and drug screens. 11 from probation and we've had 52, and I will say that I'm actually very happy with this number. We've had 52 individuals complete the program. It's usually, as you can see through the past years, they flip-flopped. We've had more people terminate than we have completed. But as of right now, we've got 52 that have completed and only 28 that have terminated from the program. Of those 28, I've had 10 individuals come back to the program. I've got one currently that has participated in a rehab. We've completed 2,560 community service hours. We've completed 700, 7,360 employment hours. I've had five out of 18 individuals complete my domestic violence program. We've administered with just our people, 1,415 drug screens. And of those, 247 are positive, which gives us 1,168 negatives. With the community service savings, we've saved the county $22,400. We've collected $13,125 from our participants. With the county regional jail bill, we've saved the county $1,158,193. So with the total of the community service savings and the regional jail bill, we've saved the county $1,180,593 so far this fiscal year. Of our 125 individuals that we currently have on the program, 17 are full correction, 65 are on bond, 18 are services only, 10 from probation and 15 from parole. Of our full-time people, we've got six employed, three unemployed, which one of them just had an interview and hopefully that person will get a job within the next week. Seven on the run and one on disability, which gives us our 17. The next paper is in regards to our grant. It just shows the breakdown. It's, it's all the way up to December. So we're doing really well. No issues with the grant. And with that being said, I received the grant application yesterday. So I will go ahead and put a mental note, I'll remind you later. I will need to be on the agenda for the, which I'll be here usually anyways. I usually come to the second meeting. But on the 18th of February, I'm assuming, if that's the correct date, on the agenda for the approval of the grant application because it's due March 3rd. Um, and with that being said, the board meeting, um, will be the week before, I think it was the eleventh. I don't, I don't have a calendar in front of me. So, we're gonna have a board meeting on the eleventh to approve the grant application before it comes to the commission. Um, so, grant time again. Um, I feel like I just did one. So, the last paper I've provided you is the financials currently. Um, so, grant aside, uh, with Community Corrections, we've spent thirty-three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and forty-eight cents. With, uh, we've brought in the thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five. Um, with the federal, uh, probation contract that we have, we've spent six thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. We've brought in fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Drug court, we've spent twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. We've brought in twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty. I'm about two months off on them, that I'm waiting for the checks to come in. Um, DHHR, we've spent eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. We've brought in a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. That does not include those last three months, I haven't received the checks yet, so, um, there should, that number should jump up. And I'm working on two more months, so, uh, hopefully those checks will be coming in soon. Haven't received the money for the juvenile scam, which was one hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. With parole, we've spent, uh, two hundred and forty dollars, we've brought in one thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. So, the total minus the grant, we've spent one hundred and forty-seven thousand thirty-three dollars and eighty cents, and we've brought in, uh, one hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. But like I said, hopefully those numbers will increase once I get the two checks from drug court and then, from the Supreme Court, and then obviously the DHHR money coming in, which will be, like I said, is three months worth. And I'm still, I'm doing two more months, so hopefully those checks will be coming in soon. So, hopefully, um, I will start working on the grant.
Thank you.
I have a year-end report for twenty twenty for the sheriff's department. Uh, they compiled these numbers, um, and it's a calendar year, not the fiscal year, so this is the totality, this is the total numbers. Looks like, uh, we answered fifty-three hundred and thirty-two calls in twenty twenty. Uh, we generated four hundred and eighty cases out of those calls, which resulted in seven hundred and twenty-nine offenses. Um, of those offenses, um, five hundred and fifty-six were misdemeanors, and a hundred and seventy-three were felony offenses. Uh, we made two hundred and ten, uh, we arrested two hundred and ten individuals for three hundred and twenty-seven offenses. We investigated two hundred and ninety-four crashes or collisions. One hundred and eighty-nine of those were reportable, and a hundred and five of those were private property exchanges. Um, we issued a hundred and forty-seven citations for two hundred violations, and we issued one hundred and forty-six warnings. Civil process assist by law enforcement, where the deputy went out and done the process instead of, uh, Mr. Teeter, was a hundred and forty-eight, um, times. We served one hundred and seven protective orders in Randolph County, and we tran, we made sixty-one transports, uh, out of county, um, which included twenty-nine mental hygiene, um, cases. And that's, um, basically all the numbers for the year. Um, it was down a little bit, I believe, this year because of COVID and, uh, limited restriction, um, with the, the road units and making contact with people unless we just absolutely had to. So, I anticipate those numbers will start to, to come up a little bit this year, but, um, that's what we have.
Thank you, sir.
You got a full force now of deputies?
Uh, I still have, um, I'm sorry, I still have, I believe, one out on quarantine. Uh, it's been an extended thing because his family member has it, but he doesn't. Um, so they've told him to stay home. Um, generally, I've got my court security staff back, uh, all but one, and he's still, um, he's clear as far as time-wise, but he's still not feeling, he's, he's pretty sick, so he's not feeling well. Um, and he, so I've just told him, just to stay home, we don't, we don't want to drag it back in here. And, uh, other than that, I've got my court security staff, they're back up. My deputies, um, other than the one, I believe, we're, we're pretty much at full staff now, so. Uh, office staff is, um, everybody's there, everybody's working. We've been trying to deal with the community with the courthouse being closed. We met people at the front door and took their taxes and their fire fees and, and, uh, generated as much work that way as we could, and, uh, you know, dealt with the public the best we could under the circumstances, so. Anything else?
Thank you, sir. Very good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Well, I just wanted to say that tomorrow is gonna be Kitty Pollings' last day. She's retiring, she's my main bookkeeper in my office. So, she's retiring tomorrow, and we're gonna have a little get-together in the courthouse lobby from eleven-thirty to one-thirty. If anybody would wanna stop by and say goodbye to Kitty. She's been a very great employee for me, and I'm gonna really miss her. Um, Kathy Wees is taking her place, she's over there training with her now, and I think she's gonna do a great job also, so I'm happy about that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, did I get everybody? Okay, um, correspondence, don't think we have any? Announcements, our next meeting will be, uh, the first Thursday of February at one-thirty here at the courthouse. I believe, what day is that? Is that the fourth? Uh, so, that'll be the next meeting, and, um, let's see, any other announcements?
I don't have any.
All right, uh, items for discussion and consideration. Number one is consider signing a resolution for the Community Development Block Grant. We have had, actually, um, that's a letter, that's item D there. Well, I can explain it while, while you're looking. Uh, we, we are, um, have had a couple of public hearings over the last few weeks regarding a community development block grant that we are applying for, for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for distressed properties, removal of distressed properties. And so, um, this is, the last step in that process is to sign and approve the resolution, uh, for the community block grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, um, the removal of distressed properties. The way the program works is, um, the property owner must volunteer to help us remediate the property situation, and then we're able to use the funds if they agree to do so. So, um, this time I'll entertain a motion to approve.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the signing of the resolution for the Community Development Block Grant.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve signing the resolution for the, uh, Community Development Block Grant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is consider renewal of new service agreement for the county grant writer. Uh, as most of you know, we, um, entered in, um, it's two years ago, uh, with, I think it was two years ago, with Peggy Ross to help us with grant writing. And what's happened is, not only is she helping us write grants, but also she's been helping us with the administration of, of grants, and, uh, doing a tremendous amount of work over and above what she, we originally anticipated she was going to do. As a result of her work, she has literally brought millions of dollars into the county in grants over the course of the last, uh, two years. And so, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to agree, uh, to renew the service agreement with Peggy Ross Young, I'm sorry, Peggy Young Ross, with the county commission, for, uh, a new year, and at the rate being fifty dollars an hour.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the renewal of the service agreement with the county writer, Peggy Ross, um, and it's fifty dollars an hour.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve renewal of the service agreement of over fifty dollars an hour. Is there any, uh, discussion? Hearing none, all the?
On all that, when it's a grant, we pay her out of the grants, it's called for.
Yes, that's true, yeah, sometimes there's money.
Take some of that out of the grant, help pay her, so.
Yep.
Plus, the amount of money that she's got with the county.
Oh, yes, she's right.
Yeah. Very grateful to the county too.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries. All right, uh, let's see, next item is consider approval of HAVA sub-grant agreement.
I'll have that one.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, a while back, I came to you and told you that I was gonna apply for a grant for the cleaning stuff that we had to use for reelection, and extra sample ballots, and extra things we had to get. The amount that we applied for was eleven thousand two hundred and three dollars and sixty-seven cents. We have been awarded that, and I just need your signature on this agreement agreeing to accept that amount for the grant.
All right.
All right, so, I make a motion that we approve the signature on the HVA, HAVA sub-grant agreement. So, we can reimburse, reimburse eleven thousand two hundred and three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
All right. Motion on the floor is to approve the, um, the CARE sub-grant application for the HAVA sub-grant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes. All right, um, next item on the agenda is consider signing a letter of support for the ABB Concrete Block Factory. Uh, as you all know, America's best, best block is, um, has been working on trying to come to the county for quite some time. Uh, they've been working on funding, uh, for, um, for being able to locate the record equipment company. And so, this, uh, they are currently doing a study for, um, for the, uh, well, it's not, it's a feasibility study, and, uh, they have been working with Yale Robinson, a part of that is letters of support. And so, uh, this is a letter of support from the Randolph County Commission to the chairman of the company, saying that, uh, we fully support and appreciate their proposed autoclaved aerated concrete block plant in Beverly. And so, hopefully, they will be able to get through their, um, studies and, and get their funding and be able to, to locate in the area. So, I'll entertain a motion that we, uh, consider approve signing the letter.
Okay, I move that we approve the signing of a letter of, of support for the ABB Concrete Block Plant.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the signing of the letter of support for the, um, potential block plant in Beverly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries. All right, next item of consideration is consider purchase of iPads for the Randolph Elvin's Health Department. We were approached, uh, by the Health Department a few weeks ago, uh, requesting that, uh, they have the ability to do the, when they do their, their vaccinations, they have to, they're, a lot of times, they're off-site. Especially with this rollout of the new vaccination program. And so, they needed a way to be able to input, because whenever they do the vaccinations, they have to input real time. And so, uh, they had requested that we look into, uh, the possibility to be able to help them with some of the, uh, CARES Act funding that we received. And so, we looked into some iPads, and, uh, we found an iPad that would, uh, work for what they're trying to, to, to get done. Um, and, um, it would be a thirty-two gigabyte, um, iPad, and there'd be, there, the need is for two of them, and the cost of each of them were three hundred and twenty-nine dollars apiece. There's no service agreement requirements, they're gonna run it through Wi-Fi, and so they'll be able to use it for their offsites to be able to input, uh, information for vaccinations. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion, we approve the purchase of these iPads for the Health Department for COVID response.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of, of two iPads for the Randolph County Health Department to help with their COVID vaccinations.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the purchase of two iPads, cost of each three hundred and twenty-nine dollars to be taken from, uh, COVID funding for the purchase of iPads for the vaccination program. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries. All right, the last item on the agenda is consider approval for COVID-nineteen sick leave for twenty twenty-one. We, uh, last year, Congress passed the Families First Corona Response Act, which mandated that any employee that was off for any, um, COVID-related, um, incident would be given eighty hours of paid leave. And, uh, that expired on December the thirty-first of twenty twenty. And so, um, the commission met and discussed, uh, proposal that we, uh, grant an additional eighty hours of paid, uh, sick leave for the duration of twenty twenty-one. So, that would begin now. Anyone that is off, um, the first eighty hours would not count towards their annual or sick leave. Also, the courthouse facilities had to be closed and staff was unable to report to work, that time would not count towards the eighty hours. Also, if a department head was required to split the office for, for service, that would not be counted against the eighty hours. But if someone has to be out, um, either because they are po, test positive or quarantined, then the first eighty hours would be covered, and, uh, additional hours after that would be, uh, covered under their annual or sick leave. So, I'll entertain a motion that we, uh, approve this policy for twenty twenty-one.
Well, when we did this too, it was, it was mandated last year, it's not, you don't have to do it this year.
That's correct.
And we chose to do it this year again, so. And if anything, you know, the government changes anything, we'll have to come back to it, but this is something that we, we wanted to do as well, so. I make a motion that we approve the COVID-nineteen related sick leave for twenty twenty-one, um, where employees are granted up to eighty hours of paid leave.
All right, motion on the floor, just approve the additional eighty hours of paid leave for the duration of twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Same sign. Yeah, we, we wanna, wanna make sure that our employees are taken care of. We don't know what's gonna happen with the next ha, round of, of CARES funding. There may be a provision in there that, that is the same as before, or it may be greater, but we don't want to take that risk. We wanted to make sure that we had a policy in place where our employees were taken care of, so.
Cause this, the current one, I think, is March thirty-first is when, there's when I think it had to.
Yeah, and I don't think there was any, uh, in there, was, was there any, um?
No, I mean, was that to employer, if they wanted to do it this time around?
Yep, so, um, that's.
This one is for effective today.
That's correct, yeah, for the duration. So, anything's been done up to now?
People off before and.
That's correct. We've had some time that's been used up to now, that's, it's beginning today. We're gonna extend that eighty hours for the rest of the year. All right? Okay, final settlements and annual accounts.
Can I make a motion that we approve the seven final settlements as presented?
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the seven, seven final settlements as presented, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries. Budget revisions? Okay, three budget revisions? All right, first budget revision is for, um, an increase in the property enforcement, um, for, um, from, to come from courthouse contractual, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And hopefully, this will be the last that we'll need before we get, um, the grant funding for, uh, that we've applied for, so.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the in-house budget revision, um, to take from twenty-five thousand from courthouse contractual to twenty-five thousand, increase property enforcement.
All right, motion on the floor is to take from, increase the property enforcement twenty-five thousand dollars, decrease courthouse contractual by twenty-five thousand. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries. All right, we have, um, in-house budget revision, a request from the sheriff's department to, uh, let's see, increase their telephone by five hundred dollars and decrease their equipment by five hundred dollars. So, entertain a motion, we approve that.
Okay, I move that we approve the in-house budget revision from the sheriff's office, and that is, leave my glasses? Taking five hundred dollars from law enforcement, and made five, five hundred dollars to law enforcement funding.
All right. Motion on the floor is to approve the in-house budget revision, uh, from sheriff's presented, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries. All right, last budget revision is, uh, for an in-house budget revision for magistrates to incre, to decrease the contractual services in magistrate's office by eight hundred dollars, to increase the utilities by eight hundred dollars. And this is to cover the cost of the, uh, of telephones for the magistrates. Uh, do, entertain a motion, we approve that?
Make a motion that we approve the in-house budget revision for the magistrate contractual service being decreased eight hundred dollars to the utility line being increased by eight hundred dollars.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the in-house budget revision as submitted from magistrate. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries. All right, division of property erroneous assessments.
I make a motion that we approve the five erroneous assessments as submitted.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the five erroneous assessments as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries. Distressed properties. Don't have anything for distressed properties? All right, therapy adjustments?
We have ninety-six.
Where are you?
It's the season.
Motion on the floor is to approve the ninety-six therapy adjustments as submitted. Can you make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the ninety-six therapy adjustments as submitted.
Motion on the floor is to approve ninety therapy adjustments as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you post? Motion carries. All right, payment of bills.